Hey, Trav.
Ryan, are you ready?
I check every time. I always frighten my family from going to work.
Yeah, me too.
Jen, Jennifer, Jennifer, Jennifer. Joe, are we ready? Yeah. Are they back there? Oh, okay.
The light's brighter.
You don't have that feeling.
Okay, welcome to tonight's meeting. This is the May fifteenth, twenty twenty-three, regular meeting of the Haywood County Board of Commissioners. This is the day after Mother's Day, and I just want to say I thank God for my mother. And my, uh, the Lord gave me a great mother, so I hope everybody had a great Mother's Day yesterday. So our first order of business will be our pledge of allegiance, and after that, I'm going to ask our pastor, Josh Fraser, to come forward for the invocation. So if everyone please stand for the pledge.
Our pledge of allegiance is to apply to the United States of America and is due to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, united, indivisible, under your protection, for all.
Let us pray. God in heaven, we thank you for this day, we're able to come together and to hear the different things that are being proposed today, to be accepted and to help our local society where we live at. I think about the commandments that you've given to us that are written here on the courthouse walls, and how each one of those are meant to bring to us as fellow men the things, the rules, the basic order that helps us in our life. I ask and I pray that we would have wisdom and guidance in all that we say, do, and think, not only here but even outside of these walls. Thank you for the blessing that it is to live here in Haywood, North Carolina, and I pray that everything that we do, we would utilize the tools and the resources that have been given to us to make this a better place. We pray all this in your name. Amen.
Thank you, Pastor Josh. Okay, our next order of business will be our public hearing, but we do not have any tonight, and then our next order of business will be a public comment session. Uh, I need, let's see, if you would, just limit your comments to three minutes, and Amy will let you know when your time's up. So I have one person signed up to speak, Van Walker. Come forward.
I'm Van Walker, of Lake Geneska, and I'm up here to answer, to ask for about the sixth time in a row, a number of questions, which obviously, none of y'all care to answer for Haywood County citizens. These are things that y'all have done, you voted on, you seem to think it was a good idea at the time, but tell us what's happened since then. I challenge each of you, Ms. Bush, Mr. Long, Mr. Insley, Mr. Rogers, Mr. Rainey, to take the time out to answer the questions. Can you do that? Do you have enough honesty or nerve to face your fellow citizens to answer these really simple questions, of which three in the middle, Mr. Long, Mr. Insley, and Mr. Rogers, voted for? You must have had a good reason. Thus far, you've given eight hundred thousand dollars to the Asheville Chamber, or Buncombe County Chamber, is that right, Mr. Francis? Asheville, Buncombe County Chamber, is that okay with you? I hope so. I'll continue to ask these questions until one of you gutless wonders has enough nerve to answer them. I don't like calling you names, but after six times of being up here, which I don't enjoy by the way, why don't you answer the questions? Mr. Long, you've been there since eighteen oh four, your family has, can you come up with nerve to answer that question? Mr. Insley, you run this thing like a dictatorship, were you not allowed your sheeple to answer the questions? Eight hundred thousand dollars to those Marxist leftist in Asheville. God, to be conned by those people, there has to be some degree of total ignorance, to be conned by those leftists. I want each one of you to answer. Now, what's Mr. Insley holding over your head, anything? Do you not have the nerve to cross him? I'd love to be up there, I'd cross him in a New York minute. I know Mr. Long is his puppy dog, so he won't cross him. Why aren't you smiling, Mr. Long? You know, President Reagan said, benign most terrifying words in English language is, "I'm from the government and I'm here to help." Is this the help y'all have given us? Eight hundred thou- and it's growing by a hundred and fifty thousand a year, you give to Asheville. My gosh, it's a con, except y'all haven't figured it out. It is a con, and I told you how the con worked. Orlando did it to seven counties around him, gained millions from those good old boys and local losers to support Orlando. And Asheville, all people's con job. It's embarrassing. So, I'm going to ask each one of you personally, I know, I only get eight, I only get three minutes, although I'm here and pay more taxes than most people do. What have we received for eight hundred thousand dollars and growing annually? Will you pass a needle ordinance? I know Mr. Rainey doesn't, I mean, excuse me, Mr. Insley doesn't want one because it would ruin his low barrier homeless shelter plans, so he doesn't want one. We investigate the pods for the jail. They're custom-made, they will work in any configuration, so investigate them. They'll cheaper, they'll save us taxpayer money. I don't, if someone is, I've heard rumors that some people are getting our own take. I don't believe it, but I'm continuing to hear more and more rumors, so hopefully, one of y'all will have the nerve to answer these questions about the jails, the needle ordinance. Keep smiling, Tommy, your time is coming, buddy, and the eight hundred thousand dollars you're giving to Asheville.
Okay, would anyone else care to address the board? Come on up, Dale.
Thank you for letting me talk. I'm Dale Glance, from Clyde. I like to come up here and see what's going in the county, but some of this junk is getting old and wore out. If I didn't love Haywood County like some people, some of us people have moved to Buncombe County where they'd be happy. They shouldn't be unable to displace you, and I personally don't care if they like me or not. I hope they don't. Thank you.
Thank you, Dale. Would anyone else care to address the board? You know, when I'll close the public comment session, we'll move to constituent concerns. And let's see, is it, I think it's Terry's turn, Terry. Do you have any constituent concerns you want to?
Nah, not that many.
Let's see, Jennifer?
I have had a few, but I think everything's been addressed so far.
Okay, great. Okay, I will mention that most Haywood County offices, including the White Oak Landfield Material Recovery Facility and Convenience Centers, will be closed on Monday, May twenty-ninth, in observance of Memorial Day, and then the regular hours will resume on Tuesday, May thirtieth. And then also, I want to mention, and I'll probably mention this again when we adjourn, but we will, I'm going to announce a special meeting to conduct the public hearing on Tuesday, May thirtieth, at five thirty, to receive public comment on the proposed budget for fiscal year twenty twenty-four. A public notice hearing will be advertised in the Mountaineer on May twenty-one. That hearing will be conducted in this room, the historic courtroom of the historic courthouse at two fifteen North Main Street, Waynesville. Okay, so I'll move on to, if there's any other constituent concern. I'll move on to administrative and agency reports. And the first will be a presentation of the Haywood County Flood Print proposal by the NC State University Coastal Dynamics Design Lab, Coastal Dynamics Design Lab, F A S L A, P L A, NC State Professor and University Faculty Scholar and Director, Andy Fox. Welcome, Andy.
Thank you for having me, Commissioners. A bit about the work that we'll be conducting. So as you mentioned, I'm with NC State University, and through our lab, the Coastal Dynamics Design Lab, we typically work in eastern North Carolina, but given the issues that were encountered following Hurricane, or Tropical Storm Fred, we're bringing some of the expertise that I'll share with you tonight to bear, working with a lot of the other activities that are going on within the county. So we just had a meeting before this session to be able to walk through a lot of the other projects that are happening so that we can do it in a coordinated fashion. The lab, we know it's a mouthful with the coastal dynamics, we call it C D D L. We lead, we put together teams that can provide community technical assistance around very specific issues. So oftentimes, we're not just looking at flooding, but economic development opportunities, recreational opportunities, and trying to basically create betterment out of issues that have come from flooding, so finding opportunity in disaster in many regards. The flood print is a term, think about a blueprint for floods, or think about a fingerprint. The way that water works on the land is different everywhere, and so we conduct a lot of technical due diligence and research into the ways that water moves, and really trying to make sure that a healthy relationship between waterways and communities can take place, so we're not kind of arming ourselves against the water bodies. And again, we're trying to focus on protecting public safety property, but at the same time, also thinking about the environmental aspects of all the water bodies, all the water bodies and what they provide to our communities. The Haywood County Flood Print is being funded through the North Carolina Office of Recovery and Resiliency, or N-COR, and the prime sponsor is U.S. Housing and Urban Development. And so this is a community development block grant through Fred, so it's at no cost to the county, no cost to any of the communities in the county. This is part of our land grant mission with the university is to be able to come out and serve North Carolina communities. We'll be working closely with the county, the town of Canton, and ourselves, and then we'll be putting together a group of technical advisors that have different elements of technical know-how based on the issues that we encounter, but also place-based, you know, what makes every place special, trying to understand what the resident experience was and is desired to be following these flooding events. And we'll be running on an eighteen-month timeline, so just started in May one through October thirty-first of twenty twenty-four, so we consider that to be a pretty healthy timeline to work on the issues with the range of different elements that we'll bring. I won't go through each of the items, but we do a number of things within our scope. We strategically write our work to not be a plan on a shelf. We actually write all our documentation to be cut and pasteable into grant opportunities so that we can find and attract those resources, in this case, into Haywood County, to be able to cover the costs of different mitigation strategies so that, so you can use all your dollars for other opportunities and not necessarily for just on those recovery elements. And in this diagram, there's, all the pink is basically community engagement, so we engage with the community throughout the process, so we're not working from Raleigh and then just coming up here and delivering a report. We'll be here often throughout the eighteen-month process to be ground-truthing and working with local staff and residents through the issues. This is an example of this kind of schematic level of work that comes out of our documentation, where we're looking at a series of different mitigation strategies. Sometimes it's with voluntary buyouts, in terms of the buyout program or acquisition program that I'm sure you've all heard of and encountered. Finding good community uses for those properties in which those homeowners choose to opt into that program so that it doesn't become nuisance use on those properties, but also developing Main Street opportunities that help to drive economic development. This particular plan's in a small town of Pollacksville in Jones County, and right now we're redoing their Main Street, and we're giving them a waterfront park and doing a whole lot of other things that might not look like it's dealing with flood, but it all has effect on the town character when we're elevating buildings to make sure that that Main Street still feels like a great Main Street. I'm a landscape architect, environmental planner by training, we have architects on the team, engineers, hydraulic modelers, and other built environment specialists. As I said, we develop our documentation to craft into a series of grant-funded opportunities, so in many communities, we might have seven, eight, nine different grants, and we'll also help to write those grants, and in some cases, we help to administer them based on the capacity needs of staff and the communities. This is kind of a tally of four of the communities in which we've worked, so again, all in eastern North Carolina, Lumberton, Whittville, Princeville, and Pollacksville. And so far, since twenty seventeen, the follow-on to our planning work has brought over twelve million dollars into these communities at no cost to the communities, so we've never taken one penny in our work. We go out and we attract those resources in through grant applications, and that's what we hope to do here. And then just really quickly, at a high level, in Whittville, Mr. Francis had an opportunity to travel down to Whittville and talk to city leadership there about our work, and trying to learn more about what we do and how we do it. We take a county-wide assessment, we look at watersheds, try to understand who is impacted and how dramatically that each individual homeowner was impacted, so that that goes into our thinking. We model those waters, so in this particular graphic, the darker the color, the greater the flooding depth. And so this particular analysis is looking at railroad tracks and road crossings, undersized culverts, undersized bridges, so trying to understand the infrastructure that might be playing a part in the flooding that folks are experiencing. Then we look at clusters of homes and businesses and properties that are impacted, related to those floodwaters, and this helps us kind of objectively decide where to work. So who are we serving? Where are we working? And then we find what we call hotspots, you know, where are those clusters, who has been most impacted, where are the resources needed the most? In this case, it was a tributary of Soul Swamp called Molly's Branch, in which we worked all the way up through this neighborhood, working with residents, getting their feedback, understanding the benefits to them, looking at the frequency of flooding and running models to understand what solutions might have what impact, and then what are the trade-offs of those investments? And then, again, working with community the entire time to get feedback, so trying to really understand how is this going to impact those who have to live with it. We know that we don't live here, we're not the ones vulnerable to the risk in this case. I was commenting earlier, where we get to return to the relative safety of Raleigh, and it's really working through and understanding how it impacts neighbors. We've worked with a lot of different partners, in this case, this project was working with the school district as well, so they were an active partner in which some of these investments are going to the school district to create flood mitigation, but also outdoor learning, new playground, ball field opportunities, working the whole solution to try to get everyone that touches it some of the benefit. I mentioned that we look at different scenarios, different flooding. We run some of the economics on it, it's called benefit-cost analysis, BCA's, it's what you have to score out at, is what's the return of investment for the grantors, so we're able to do that with our work. And then finding the right kind of funding to be able to build those types of projects, and then kind of stitching them together, a series of small projects that add up to something much bigger that has that cumulative impact of recovery and mitigation, but also long-term benefits back to the community of, again, recreation, just open space with the development pressures that a lot of communities feel, trying to make sure that it's the right fit. And then we visualize it to be able to kind of tell the story graphically, most people want to see a picture, not necessarily all the data points, and so we're able to do that as well, working with all the different partners. As for the architectural side of things, building elevations, we know that there have been, especially in Canton, significant impacts from Fred, and we're able to look at the building profiles, what would have to happen for those building owners to be able to get flood insurance, and work through that on a case-by-case, building-by-building, property-by-property level. And so, thank you for your time today. Again, wanted to provide you that overview. We will definitely be back in front of you. It's a big part of our process is to provide you updates, but also, at the end, with our work, what makes all the difference in the world is to work collaboratively along the way, get feedback to make sure we're doing the right things for you, so that we can build consensus through the process so that it's, the report can be adopted, because once it's codified, then that really sets it in motion to be able to use it as an official county document, to be able to pursue these grants that can help, again, attract the resources to actually implement the projects. So with that, I'm happy to answer any questions that you might have. David has my contact information, and again, we'll be here for the next eighteen months and hopefully longer to be able to work on these issues.
Go ahead.
I know when Hurricane Katrina hit New Orleans in two thousand and five, the devastation that occurred there, General Russell Honore was put in charge of that whole situation, given the presidential order. I was privileged to hear him speak concerning that Hurricane Katrina aftermath, and concerning kind of what the work you do, and I see in your presentation, the railroad line there in Whittville, and he lingered a very long time talking about, we're not very smart in places like New Orleans when they build a railroad and elevate it, and it basically creates a man-made dam which prohibits the natural flow of water. And if you're on the wrong side of that, you're going to be flooded.
Yes, sir.
Because it can't get out. And I noticed you had some mitigation proposals there about increasing culvert size, cleaning culverts out, and things of that nature. But I guess his solution was to put culverts, put drainage passageways under these berms, under these railroad lines, and actually highways. Does your work entail doing any of that?
It does. We have hydraulic modelers, so that's not my skill set, but we have engineers at NC State that can run computational models to be able to study various impacts of elevating bridges, removing roadways altogether, putting in larger culverts, and so they run a series of models to try to understand where is that tipping point between investment and the flood risk reduction? And so those are the findings that we'll bring back and be able to talk through what is reasonable, what is desired, what is feasible, and based on that level of reduction, because not everything, of course, is possible, you can't cut folks off in terms of their transportation networks. And then it's trying to build the partnerships and the groups to be able to work on those issues, working with NCDOT and others in terms of what are the possibilities. Railroads are a whole different.
Oh, yeah.
Challenge.
Yeah, we found that out.
When it comes to that, but still, at least you're armed with information to be able to have a conversation about what kind of difference it makes for the roads and the rail lines that cross through communities.
Well, his solution was to make sure that floodway remains open, and to put culverts or passageways underneath the rail line so that water can go out.
It's key.
Because it backs up and floods everybody behind, it ordinarily wouldn't be flooded. So to keep that floodway open. So to keep that floodway open and keeping the water running downhill, especially in these mountains, is pretty critical.
Yeah, and a lot of the models that those roadways and railways were engineered on, those models don't take into account these very large rain events. And so it's also understanding that we're getting more intense rains more often in many places, and that maybe the design model from thirty years ago, twenty years ago, fifty years ago, is no longer the standard as well. So having those conversations about where are we at now and what are things going to look like in the future.
Go ahead. Did you have?
What kind of impact is it going to have, like we're Evergreen, or active Evergreen shutdown, and you're doing this work, you're going to do some work in Canton? What kind of impact's that going to have, being in that floodway and stuff down there?
That's a great question. We're at the very beginning. May one was the beginning of our project period, so working with town of Canton officials and trying to understand the longer-term impacts of the Evergreen announcement. When we first started discussing this project, that news was not known to anybody. So we're going to be working through that and trying to follow the lead of all the community leadership in Canton in terms of what their long-term visions are for that area, and then how we can think about, again, helping to improve that, that condition in some ways. Is that flood storage? Is it open space? Is it new industry? I think there's a lot of different scenarios that might be run, and we'll take our guidance from the town of Canton. With this agreement, there's actually, both the county and the town have signed the MOU to be formally a part of this project, so we're very excited by that. It's daunting, but we're very excited to be working also specifically with the town of Canton in this process.
They, if they choose just to leave that sitting there, like you're talking about, will that have a big impact on what y'all are doing around it?
Yes, in that it's a lot of developed area, and there's, you know, there's a lot of real estate there that maybe could be worked with in certain ways, but it all depends on what the future holds for that site. And certainly, the wastewater treatment and other critical infrastructure to the town has to be thought about very carefully.
Okay, so one thing I was wondering, are you just focusing on Canton and Crusoe? Or because Clyde had a devastating flood in '04, and the reason it wasn't as devastating this time is because that had been mitigated somewhat?
Yes, sir.
But we have a lot of flood properties that the county owns in Clyde that could be made into something maybe better. Are you looking at that possibly?
We're going to take that county-level kind of scan.
Okay, good.
And try to see if that's one of the hotspots. Right now, we know, we came up in February and met with all kinds of town and county staff, and did a tour, and got to see all the heavily impacted areas. From that, it was clear that there were places in the town of Canton, but also in the county, so non-jurisdictional county, that, you know, those folks need help too. Just because you're not in the town doesn't mean you don't need help. So that's why we started there, but it certainly does not exclude Clyde from being.
Okay.
Part of the initial look, yeah.
Well, I think, you know, because Clyde's the center of the county, it's the heart of the county, and anything we can do to help that community thrive more, because they lost a lot of their tax base when that happened, but if we can have, and I, you know, some ideas on how to help that community, it would be good. And I do know, it was brought up at a meeting about a road in Clyde that constantly floods and people can't get out. I think it's Thompson Cove Road. So there are some issues still in Clyde that we probably need to be, try to, you know, we need to try to mitigate, if you will. And I just, you know, keep that on your radar, if you would. I think it's important.
We will, for sure, and this is the kind of feedback that we need.
Okay, great.
Again, not knowing the areas.
Yeah, okay.
It's lot by lot, and it's street by street. That's where we start, so we kind of work between that very detailed and then the very broad.
Okay.
And certainly, there's all kinds of exciting work that's happening with Haywood Waterways and other entities that are already kind of moving down that path rapidly in terms of the larger scale. And so that's what we were talking about today, is where can we fill in the gaps? Where can our work support it instead of trying to kind of retool it or recreate it? We really want to know we can fit into a larger solution of what's already moving here.
Okay, great, great.
You mentioned early in your presentation, individuals that would have an option to sale. Can you discuss a little bit how that works and where the value determination comes from?
I can't. I don't manage the program. Definitely a great question, is that it's a voluntary program that homeowners can apply to, to then basically work on that valuation. The traditional buyout programs are often pre-disaster dollar amounts, but Encore, they have their own program that they're running, which is actually current market value. So there are different options. North Carolina is really on the leading edge of so much of these issues because of all the threats that are faced. So I think that that is a really important point, that our work will oftentimes imagine very large things that impact individuals, and then it creates a conversation about, what is your experience? What is your risk? Are you interested in moving, or elevating, or just rebuilding like it is? So we don't come in kind of carrying a mandate to have people move. It's really a discussion and then talking about the risks through detailed analysis, so that every individual is armed with information related to their issues, so they can make the best decision for them and their families. And oftentimes, that's a challenge when you're talking about communities where a lot of folks have been impacted. It can be hard to get to that level. And so we can't do it everywhere, but within these hotspot areas, it allows us to kind of scale it, at least within our lab's capacity, to be able to look at those things on a lot by lot basis.
Individual.
Yeah, because one side of the block, you might elevate, need to elevate one foot to be where you need to be, which kind of creates a nice place for a porch. Other end of the block, it might be eight feet. And do you want to live in a house that's eight feet in the air? You know, those are the conversations about insurance. You know, can you afford? Can you age in this place? Like, what are the dollars and cents of it, too? So hard discussions, but ones that are, that need to be had.
Somebody else have anything to say? Thank you, and we'll look forward to the next presentation.
Thank you very much. Thank you for allowing us to come and be a part of your community.
Yeah, and thanks for coming up, thanks for leaving Raleigh and coming west.
I wish I could stay longer, a lot longer.
Yeah, I bet. Especially since summer's getting here. You don't want to be in Raleigh in the summer.
Agreed.
Yeah, okay. All right, great.
Thank you.
And the next item under Administrative Agency Reports and Presentations will be the presentation of the manager's recommended budget for fiscal year 2023, 2024. And we have our county manager, Brett Morehead. Welcome, Brett.
I'm happy to present the recommended budget for FY 2014 to the night. It's prepared along the guidelines established by the Local Government Budget and Fiscal Control Act. It's balanced, and we'll spend a few minutes combing through it. I would like this to be more conversational, so if you have any questions, just please stop me, and I'll answer them, or just let me know. First off, to talk about property tax. That's the bulk of our revenue, and you can see from current year, adopted FY 23, we have about $52.19 million in property tax. I'm sorry, you should have a handout of this in front of you, smaller, some notes pages if you need that. FY 24, keeping the tax rate at 53.5 cents, would generate about $53.6 million, or an increase of 1.45 million. But I'm recommending a tax increase of 1.5 cents, and we'll get to that. But typically, the things that are driving this are all related to expanding the School Resource Officer Program, making sure that all of our schools are covered with an SRO. But we'll spend some time talking about revenues, and we get to expenditures, and I'll take a deeper dive into the School Resource Officer Program. With natural growth, we have about that 1.453 million increase. Real property is our largest component of that. It's increasing $727,000. Vehicle tax increasing about $222,000. Personal property, $440,000, and corporate or utility or SBA, depends on how you want to talk about it, it's $44,000. That's at the natural growth. With the tax increase of 1.5 cents, real property is actually increasing 1.95 million. Motor vehicle tax, $340,000. Personal property, $543,000. And corporate utility tax is increasing $94,000. Sales taxes, also a major revenue from current year of $21.9 million. We expect it to grow to $24 million, $26,765. A pretty large increase, but the current year, FY 23, estimates are very conservative. So we looked at our end-of-year expected and increased next year's sales tax in that three to three and a half percent range. This gives you a little bit more feel for how the sales tax is divided up. Remember, there are a local designation for Haywood Community College. That's the blue bar. The orange bar is actually those designations for sales tax by the state statute. And then the green bar is, are the funds that you have available to fund projects at your discretion. So when you see that, the county's portion of 15.88 is increasing by 1.38 million. Community college is up $467,000, and, or I'm sorry, the school system's up 467, and the community college is up 261,000. Other taxes and licensing, or licenses, is showing a decrease. The adopted FY 23 of $4.149 million actually includes the TDA tax. And because TDA, or occupancy tax, however you want to talk about it, is designated by state statute, we talked to the auditors about pulling that out. And so going forward, it will not be in the general fund. We're going to put it in a special revenue fund. And I think because those are designated funds that are actually outside of the control of this board, I think having those in a special revenue fund makes sense. It looks like a huge drop, but when you control for that, it's an actual increase of about $38,000 for next year. The TDA tax is $1.9 million of the 4.149 of current year. Any questions on that? Pilt, payment in lieu of taxes in our beer and wine, we put together, it's staying flat of $592,000. You can see the actuals for the last two years are in the range, so we're comfortable leaving that flat for next year. Restricting intergovernmental is a lot of different accounts, but basically, the majority of it is related to Health and Human Services, funds that come in for either DSS or health department functions. It's a decrease of $195,000. Actually, there were some increases in this category, but we've got two major decreases. The dental clinic revenue is down $391,000. We aren't seeing the number of patients that we had planned this year, but on the other side of that, the expenditures aren't quite as much either. And for next year, we actually see a decrease in boarding home payments related to foster care. It's a decrease of $103,000. So if it weren't for those two, those total 495,000 together, we wouldn't have a decrease. But those two are major decreases that we're having to absorb elsewhere. Permits and fees, this is up $325,000, and it's basically all for development services or inspection fees. Later on the agenda, you'll have a fee schedule, and so we've went ahead and put those fees in for next year, reflecting an increase of $325,000 for inspections. We did have a slight drop in pistol permits. You may have heard a few weeks ago, the General Assembly did away with that pistol permit fee. That was $9,000 in revenue, but it was in this category. Sales and services is up slightly at $158,800. The bulk of that is ambulance fees. They are up $125,000. And we also have about $75,000 new money in North Carolina Medicaid Managed Care. It's a new revenue source for us. So those two have added some new revenue to sales and service. One of the largest, and I guess everyone knows that interest rates are up, that's bad when you're borrowing money, but because we invest our idle cash, we have an increase of $750,000 next year. Just to give you some context, a one-day yield, last May 9th of 2022, we were getting about 0.57% interest. Same day, May 9th of 2023, we're getting 4.99% interest. So as the rates are up, the amount of interest that we receive is up. Miscellaneous revenue shows a decrease of just over $37,000. This is sort of a catch-all count. The largest drops we're seeing are related to donations. Meals on Wheels receives donations. They alone are down about $16,000. So maybe the donations come in, but right now, we don't feel comfortable budgeting an increase, or even flat. That's sort of a summary of the revenues. Are there any questions before we start talking about expenditures? Okay. So the School Resource Officer Program, we currently have eight schools that do not have a School Resource Officer, as I've worked with the sheriff and the board, to come up with a plan to see if we could provide coverage for all of those schools that do not have an officer. So this budget does fund eight positions. That's salaries, benefits, operating, and significant capital costs. The budget also funds the pay plan, Merit and COLA. Everyone knows we're in a really tough spot to attract and keep good employees. So in this budget, we have an increase of a 4% COLA and up to a 2% Merit. That's roughly 6% combined. When you look at February's cost of living, or the CPI, Consumer Price Index, it was at 6.19% over the prior February. So I think 6% keeps us and keeps our employees at market. We do lose some employees, but we aren't losing many employees for pay, and I think keeping this at 6% is a way that we keep folks able to serve the public. One other thing that I do want to mention that's in there, we have funds, when we implement the COLA and Merit, if the board approves it, we also have funds to make sure that all of our employees, full-time employees with benefits, will be all at $15 or better. That's something that we've worked at over the last couple of years, but this gets them to $15 an hour. We also have some increases related to the local government retirement system. The state changes that employer contribution every year. That's costing us about $531,000 more next year. And health insurance for existing and retiree insurance or employees is about $658,000. We also have some increases in foster care. That continues to increase. We have an increase of a little over $330,000 for foster care next year. So mentioned earlier, a penny and a half on the. So mentioned earlier, a penny and a half on the tax rate brings in about 1.475 million. The expenditure side is a little over $763,000 for eight positions. Operating of 112,000, and vehicles and equipment is estimated at $600,000. Vehicle prices continue to increase. All of the equipment that goes in them from light bars and radios and everything like that is driving it. So you can see, we've tried to designate the full 1.5 cents for this program.
Brian, how many positions was that? Was it on?
It's eight.
Eight, okay.
Also, do you have a breakdown of that, of what that costs the average household? I know we talked about that. Do you have that handy?
Yes, sir. So just using a $250,000 house, the 1.5 cents equates to $37.50 a year.
Per year.
That's easy math, about $3 a month, so.
So you said that increases.
To expand the SRO program, because we already fund several School Resource Officers differently.
So that would give us full coverage at each school?
Full-time coverage at each school?
Yes.
Because I think right now, we've got some part-time coverage, I believe. Don't we at the middle schools?
I'm not exactly sure how it's divided up. I can get that information from, you know, Superintendent.
Oh, okay. That's okay. That's okay. I just know we don't have full-time coverage at every school. And we have a lot of schools that are very rural, out of the way, and it would take law enforcement several minutes to get there.
On the employee compensation, and you know, we budget these funds centrally. You'll see that later on in a non-departmental account. We have 2% merit, 2% COLA, a little over 2.7 million. And that also has the funds to bring everyone up to $15 minimum pay. We did preserve the Christmas bonus, $175,000. Fully funds longevity and 3% 401K. One of the big drivers, medical insurance, our health plan continues to perform better than national average, but it's still going up $1,000 per employee per year to 19.5. Then just touch back onto the elders or the local government retirement system. General employees, we're increasing again from 11.4% to 12.89%, and law enforcement officers going up a full percentage from 13 to 14.10. I would say the COLA, if the board approves it, the 4% COLA would go into effect the first full pay period in July. That pay period starts on July 3rd, so employees would see that in their take-home pay on the check they receive on July 21st. We had a total of 28 positions requested for current year. You can see only eight are actually included in the budget. The total cost of those positions would be a little over $2.7 million. And just the position costs and operating for the SROs is 875,315. Active employees, when you separate the cost, it is going up about $752,000, where retirees, much smaller group, only 67,000, a total increase of $819,000. You've seen this graph several times. I do just like to keep it on your radar screen that it continues to go up. You know, from fiscal year 19 to 20, we actually changed providers. We left Crescent and went to Edna. You can see, we had a dip and it's increasing fairly rapidly, but at a much lower rate than if we hadn't taken action in that fiscal year 19 to 20 change. Operating overall, the general fund is only up $1.5 million. When you start dicing that up, 1.5, 703,000, or just under half is for the schools and the college, 591,291. Keep in mind, that's based off of the new funding formula that the board approved a few weeks ago. HCC is an increase of 112,015. This equates to a 3.5% increase, much lower than what Dr. White presented to you at the last board meeting. She and I talked several times. She understands the constraints that we're faced with, and she's going to make it work, but it's not without pain, that's for sure. Already mentioned, foster care increases. Recovery court is in there, 230,000. That's offset 100% by a state grant, but it does contribute to the increase of 1.5. Disposable medical supplies, Travis is here, the cost of medical supplies continues to increase. And I believe almost all of that is related to the cost of oxygen. Some of the things we've faced, patients stay on the vehicles longer waiting to offload. So we've had cost increases for oxygen, but we're using more operationally. Utilities, we've planned on an increase based off of what Duke Energy is requesting, so an increase of 53,000. And then juvenile detention fees, those are the fees the state charges us to house juveniles that are from Haywood County, and that number continues to increase. What they charge is up, and actually, the users are increasing too. So the operating for the school system is up $591,000. Capital is, shows 1.25 million. That's an increase of 350,000. I think Superintendent Putnam talked about the ability for him to use some of their capital funds to replace devices when he presented his budget, and this is an increase of 350,000. And the debt service payments for next year totaled a little over $3.7 million. Both capital and debt come from the school's earmark on sales tax. They're presented here, but they actually are not in the general fund. Sort of similar to the community college, the operating is up $112,000 to 3.312 million. That represents a three and a half percent increase. Capital, we're leaving flat at 750,000, and the debt's up 253,800. Vehicles, always a major budget dropper. For current year, we spent a little over $2.1 million on vehicles. 1.3 was just ambulances alone. This board has been very proactive in ordering ambulances ahead of time, so one of the reasons that we were able to show a decrease for next year is we already have on order ambulances. It's a much different story on when they will get delivered. They have significant supply chain issues, but that's one of the reasons that we are getting to drop this year, is all the ambulances have been ordered. So for next year, we have 28 vehicles totaling $1.8 million. Overall, a decrease of 355,000, but all of these meet the requirements for replacement from the garage, and hopefully, we can get those ordered and take delivery sooner than Capital projects, we have some HVAC work. We have $186,000 budgeted there. The Canton Library bathrooms need renovation. We have $60,000 there. Paragon Parkway, we have $45,000 budgeted for fire suppression and lighting upgrades. And then we have $50,000 in for the armory. This is outside of the cost that we're working on, the project David got through the CDBG program. It seems like it's the longest project known to man, but we do have $50,000 more in there so we can get that wrapped up hopefully in FY24. I said hopefully. Jail expansion, even though the bids we received and rejected were much higher, that does not overcome that the jail population continues to hit that 109 capacity. So I think it's next week that we are interviewing construction manager at Risk, C Mar Project or Construction Firms. It's my hope that in June, we bring back one that we feel that can bring in the jail as designed at a price that we can afford. And then because we've had delays, we will probably have an interest-only payment in FY24, but a full year of principal and interest in FY25. Just to put it in front of you, again, you've seen our debt profile. I think it's beneficial to keep track of it. It's a very healthy debt profile. I think this year, it drops $390,000 on our side on the school system. You'll see, we're still a couple of years away from that balloon payment. You can see it at $2.3 million in outline years, and then it drops off significantly. And the community college, really, all of the profiles except for a few peaks are very, very well managed.
Those are great slides, Brian.
Yeah. Some of the things we want to talk about in outline years, besides the jail debt, is the operating and staffing costs. It will be phased in, because we don't think that, you know, when you build 154 beds, that it will be all full on the first day. Hopefully not. That's, this is supposed to meet our needs for 25 years. But we will have to have additional costs for inmates, operating, insurance, all of those things. Employee increases, this continues to drive our needs. Like I said, finding good employees is difficult, and so we want to keep the ones that we have. Each 1% increase is about $400,000. Health insurance, I'm not sure what we can do, other than we're investing in our wellness programs, trying to contain costs, but as the costs increase, we're faced with those. And then the retirement system continues to be increases. HCC, we know that they will have to have some, as they modernize, they open that Human Services or Health Sciences building, they'll have costs associated with that coming to us. We also have the school system funding formula. If the student enrollment increases, we'll have to increase that per pupil funding 3.25% for the next two years after this year. Inflation continues to be just an obstacle for us. We're faced with the same thing that everybody that lives here is. We moved some money around today for the sheriff's office for fuel. They're spending $19,000 a month on fuel. So the pain at the pump, we feel it just like everyone else. And foster care, I'm not sure exactly what we can do to curb that. Children that need placement, it's our requirement from the state to house them and find them places that they'll be safe. So, and the cost just continues to go up. And I just wanted to circle back to the library renovation. If it's a renovation or new construction, we're still talking probably eight to 10, it may be even 12 million, but that's got to be an outline year consideration. If a full-blown renovation doesn't occur, we'll have to talk about replacing the HVAC system. And I've chatted privately with all of you about the issues we have with that HVAC system, and we'll figure that out. But I'm sure that it will go out on a hot July or August day, and then Tim will be yelling at me. Just to give you some context, I thought this was interesting. So payroll and benefits, I went back through 2013 through FY22. Payroll and benefits have increased from 28.03 million to 44.6 million. That equates to an average yearly increase of 5.38%. The cost of employees just continues to increase. When you look at the value of a penny on the tax rate, from the same time period, it went from 693,000 to a little over $950,000. That's basically an average increase of 3.8%. Except if you pull out the revow in FY22, because that was a 24% increase, if you pull that out, the value of a penny is only increasing at 1.24% a year. So while we're glad to get natural growth, 1 and 1/4% is much less than 5.38%. Just so you had that information. Okay. So the expenditure side is actually increasing $3.2 million from 96.9 to 100.1, or as recommended. I think when you look at public safety, Health and Human Services, and I'm going to skip over non-departmental to education, those two totaled $3.55 million, or 111% of the growth. Reason I pulled out non-departmental is that's where we budget centrally, the salary, merit and COLAs. So we actually will spread that before the end of the fiscal year. And it largely will follow the lines of Public Safety and Human Services, because that's the bulk of our employees. You can see a drop in economic and physical development. That's where we had, that's the category or function that we had Tourism Development Authority in. So now that we've moved that to a separate fund, it's no longer there. And then, like I said, our debt dropped off almost 400,000, 390,000 this year. When you look at the increases overall, to the general fund, 4.1 million in salaries and benefits. This is the COLA, the merit, and the eight positions. Operating, we dropped 434,000. Capital, down 100,000, and debt service, 390. So you can see, basically, if it weren't for the cost of employees, the budget would be pretty flat. Even with a penny and a half tax increase, we need some fund balance to balance, or at least start the year. But this is the fourth or third year in a row that we are dropping our appropriation. I think this shows that we're trying to get leaner as we move. Keep in mind, in FY22, we did hit fund balance for about $2.7 million, but that was largely moving school and college funds out of the general fund to their own funds. So I'm, this is not a trend I like to see, but our revenues are coming in over budget, our expenditures under budget. So I feel like this is a good approach for the upcoming fiscal year. Okay, I'm going to spend more time than anybody cares talking about these other funds, but they are part of the net budget, and we need to review them. Fund 15 is our health insurance fund. It's an increase of a little over $1 million. Fund 16 is our workers' comp fund. It's a decrease of $999,999. Will likes to be very specific. Maybe just round it to 100. And Fund 16 is our workers' comp fund, and we've had really good experience this year, so we think we can back off of what we need to fund. Fund 20 is the separation allowances for retired law enforcement officers. It's remaining flat. The emergency 911 fund, that's the funds that we get from the state to run 911. It's an actual decrease of $192,000. And solid waste is coming in at 5,765,784. It's down a dollar from current fiscal year. Fund 29 is the Junealeska Sanitary District, total of $331,000. That's an increase of 13,877. Fund 31 is the school system's debt service fund at 4.957. That's an increase of 467,190. And Fund 33 is the community college debt service fund, total of 3.59 million, an increase of 253,800. You may remember, these three funds were set up mid-year, this year or last year, I can't remember. There are no changes to any of these funds. Previously, they were not even kept on our books, but one of the Gaspys changed it, so now we have to account for it, and they remain flat at 61,350,000 and 910,000 respectively. We have the We have the new fund, the occupancy tax fund, two point nine six two. That's an increase of an even million dollars. Tourism or the occupancy tax continues to perform very well, and so it's on its own fund, and it's up a million dollars. Fund twenty-seven is the Road District Fund. It's a total of three hundred eleven thousand. You can see here, there are three road districts that are requesting an increase. Maggie Valley, fifteen to nineteen cents, that's Maggie Valley Country Club. Upper Chestnut, six cents to twenty cents. It's a large increase, but current year, there was a little bit of miscommunication with our spreadsheet that we sent out to them. So they went from FY twenty-two to, from twenty, down to six cents, and now they want to go back up to twenty cents. And give you some perspective, Upper Chestnut is an increase of ten thousand dollars. Current year, they are at four thousand three hundred eleven dollars, and they're going to fourteen thousand eight seventy-four. So I don't think they intended on taking that cut current year, and we cleared that up. And then Tuscola Park is an increase of only one thousand three hundred thirty dollars, an increase from ten thousand five thirteen to eleven thousand eight forty-three. We have asked representatives from these three road districts to be here for the public hearing, in case there are people that have questions about the increases, they can actually answer those.
Those increases come from the homeowners association themselves, is that correct?
For most part, I think they act like HOAs, but they're the road districts, but yes.
It's just passed through funds. We just handle the money.
We just collect it, we levy and collect the taxes for them. Yes, sir.
Brian, is there a cap on that? Is twenty cents, or is there a cap? No.
So our agreements capped them at twenty cents, but there's an interesting, unless the board approves more. So they're capped at twenty unless you all actually go over twenty, or allow them to go over twenty, I should say. And then the fire district fund totals a little over six million dollars. There are three districts requesting increases. Junaleska, from seven and a half to ten, that actually increases Junaleska by a hundred ninety-seven thousand sixty-seven dollars. Maggie Valley going from six to eight, that increases their revenue by three hundred thirty-eight thousand seven hundred forty-three dollars. And Waynesville going from six to eight increases their revenue, a hundred seventy-nine thousand eight fifty-five. And like I said, with the road districts, we've asked those fire districts to be here in case there are questions about the increase. The budget is, will be available in inspection. Amy will have a copy. I think Will's already given Kathy Vosler a copy to have at the library, and Joey is going to have it published first thing in the morning on our website. The next steps, Mr. Chairman, you already talked about a public hearing. We'll have that public hearing at five-thirty here in this room on the thirtieth. That's the Tuesday after Memorial Day. And we'll get an ad to the mountaineers to announce that public hearing. And then at the June fifth meeting, hopefully the Board of Commissioners considers adoption. That's all I have, Mr. Chairman. I'll be glad to answer any questions or set up work sessions, whatever this board would like to see.
Right. I know, I know what's on everybody's mind, closing the pact of evergreen. What kind of a projection do you have moving forward as far as loss of tax revenue?
We received a letter, I guess, three or four weeks ago where they, the company actually asked for us to write off ninety percent of the value, and Judy declined that. So I'm not sure the next steps, what they, how far they'll pursue it, but we know there's going to be significant decreases. And this budget has been very cautious in that. The natural growth, we're holding our breath on. Sales tax, that's why we aren't pushing the envelope, because this is, this is huge, and we're being very careful.
Any major reflection on the budget, probably take, if there is one, it'll be next year.
I think it will be next year that we fill the biggest burdens of that hit to the tax base. Yeah. When I say next year, I'm talking about FY twenty-five, not FY twenty.
Speaking of that, where's our fund balance currently?
We're very healthy. Of course, we only report that as of six-thirty, so.
And you don't know it till Christmas.
Yeah, we, it only comes once a year at midnight on June thirtieth, but we, we trying not to overstate anything. Revenues are coming in very well, and.
We're comfortable.
We're comfortable that, that slide I showed you where we used five million dollars to help balance for current year, we feel like if we have to hit that, it will not be much more than a million or two.
It's nice knowing that we got a comfortable fund balance, you know, especially with what Commissioner Long brought up, because we don't know what the future holds, so that's why you have those rainy day funds.
And, you know, been with us longer, we've fronted some funds, we're still fronting funds for cleanup of Tropical Storm Fred. So we've just recently started the EWP program. This board awarded the contract to SDR for the Temporary Debris Management Site. So some of those things are, that's sort of why I'm hedging a little bit, is because we have a lot of outstanding, you know, seven-figure projects that we're working on, and, but I think all of those will be reimbursed as well.
Now, we got to, looking through this presentation, I mean, we got to take care of our employees, which is what you've done. You know, with the four percent and the two percent, I mean, that's something I've always been big on. You got to take care of them, they're going to go somewhere else, and it's going to cost us money. The other big, big item I see is the SRO officers, you know, the penny and the half. And I hate, I hate talking about an increase more than anything, but also hate not protecting our kids as well. You know, we got to take care of our kids and watch after them and take the steps that we can take to be sure they're protected. So knowing that that's roughly on a two hundred fifty thousand dollar home, thirty-seven dollars for the year is not too bad, even though I don't, I don't like it still. But like I said, I don't like not, not taking care of our kids as well. So overall, looks like a pretty good type budget and good presentation.
Thank you. And, you know, a lot of credit goes to our department heads. We did, we cut about four point eight million dollars out of their requests, and that wasn't, and that's positions and operating, those things. And it's not, it wasn't an easy budget to put together. Lot of tough decisions, but what you said, to take care of our employees, so much of what we do are people in cars taking care of the public, and this budget reflects that, it really does.
Speaking of SROs, do you have a timeline on that if this budget is approved? I know we've been talking with the sheriff, and we've all talked individually with you about all this, but just looking at a timeline, I was curious of how soon we'd get that going.
Getting to eight, and I don't want to speak for the sheriff, but getting to eight for the start of the school year would be tough. But if we can work with, guy with a gun behind me.
We're going to have a man come up and address that.
I just said we made, we made a lot of cuts, so I know there's somebody behind me.
He was standing back there smiling.
I think initially what we're looking at, can you hear me? Okay. I think initially what we're looking at is a phased approach. I have enough school resource officers now to maybe hit four at the beginning of the next school year. But what we're also doing is holding a school in July that I intend to send six or eight deputies to, that will also qualify them to be SROs, so that we can actually move forward from July, and hopefully by the end of the school year, have all eight positions filled. But understand that we have to recruit and get folks into the agency. In doing that, if we just take what we have in patrol and operations now, we leave a great gap in our ability to respond to calls for service. So it's going to require some balance. It's also important to understand that a school resource officer requires by state training and standards, at least one year of having served on the sheriff's department, having forty hours of specialized training as an SRO, and then we put them into the school. One of the things to really understand about what a school resource officer does today, and these are, these are not easy things for me to share with you, and I, I will just be as honest as I can, there's a great challenge in this for me, because typically, school resource officers had some experience, were probably close to retirement, they had great communication skills, knew the families, and were integrated into the community in a way that most deputies or police officers weren't. We still need that. But what we also need is a combat soldier. We need someone that's capable of responding to a shooting incident and being willing to look at another human being, and in defense of six to twelve-year-old kids, shoot that person dead. That's not easy for me to tell you. I've spent some time in combat, and it's tough, but these are the types of people that I have to build within our agency and ensure that our families have a confidence in the men and women that choose to do this, in being able to keep their children safe, but also have the, what we call the soft skills, to guide their families through life challenges that they experienced in school. And the other side to this is to have, we really want to work towards building the image of law enforcement. And in a lot of the studies that, that I've looked, and even through some of my classes with the Sheriff's Association, it really begins at that, that elementary school level. And the eight schools that we're talking about are all elementary schools. We've got them in the high schools, and we've got them in the middle schools, but the elementary schools is, are where we really get in to building that image, starting that education, and building those community partnerships between our public servants and the families here. So this, when you consider this, and you look at this, understand that it's a, it's a very deep, my intent is to build a very deep and ingrained, community-based program that goes far beyond what we typically understood an SRO to be. So this really is an investment. It's an investment in our youth, in our children, in our schools, and it's frankly going to be a significant challenge for the sheriff's office, but I think we can meet it. I'm sorry, did I get my three minutes? Amy didn't, does me. Okay, all right. Sorry.
You almost need to be a little bit of a guidance counselor, too.
And that's it. And there are a number of programs that we have now, and there's a lot of talk about having conversations, you build those relationships. The key is really not in the response. We used to have a saying in the Army, the battle is won in the preparation, not necessarily on the field. And I'm applying that philosophy here within the schools. If we know and we understand those that may be at risk, we see behaviors that are suspect, we start working on developing those relationships, we want to prevent it before it even happens. And that's the key to having those officers and deputies in elementary schools. And also understand that this is a partnership outside of just the sheriff's office. I've talked with Chief Adams, I've talked with Chief Sluter, and the folks at Maggie Valley, and we're, we're working to move forward together with this. So it's going to be a coordinated effort. It's, we're not going to be operating in silos. And again, it's, it's an investment. So that's what I would, that's what I would share. That's probably a very long answer to your question, and, but.
Bill, do you think you can, for lack of a better word, can you poach some deputies from other counties maybe to come here?
That's a difficult challenge, because they're faced with staffing challenges. And I'll tell you, you know, we have some staffing challenges, but our surrounding counties, just looking at them, seem to have more significant challenges in the staffing arena than we do. It will be tough to bring them in. You mentioned earlier about part-time deputies, and we use part-time deputies sometimes to fill when we have a full-time deputy that has to be out, sick, or there's, you know, something that affects them where they need to be out of work. My hope is, a lot of this can change, the legislature is considering a number of bills, one right now would be, give us the ability to bring retired law enforcement officers back while they collect retirement, but they can actually come back and continue to work full-time. Right now, they're limited in scope in doing that, and if that opens up, my hope is, we will be able to bring some folks in immediately. But again, that's.
Federal legislative decision?
Yes, sir. It's, it's actually, if I remember correctly, from the report I read from the Sheriff's Association, that actually goes to the Senate when they come back in session. It's, there's a very good chance of that passing. I don't know, Sean, okay, he wasn't following it, but some of us are following that. I'm sorry, didn't mean to put you on the spot. I was just wondering if they had any further information, because you know, the legislature, things are constantly changing, and so, and I haven't checked in on that in a couple of days. But I'm very hopeful that that will help us, and there's some folks that will be willing to come in and do that.
I can see how that would pass, because it's hard to find help now. I mean, you know, it's just, it just is.
Right. And there's, there's a lot of support for it. I hope that it passes. If it does, it could significantly change or shorten the timeline that we could actually get deputies and officers into the schools. So that's, that's my hope. But I will keep you informed as this goes, if this budget passes and is approved. The good thing is, we, I was working very closely with the county manager. For the first time in the history of the sheriff's office, we're actually paying, we're hiring and paying recruits to go through basic law enforcement training to fill our slots. That's an important aspect, because a lot of folks, all three were from the mill, all folks, all three of those folks can't afford to go to school on their own, take time off, and then come and apply at the sheriff's office. So what we did is we front-loaded all that. We're actually paying them a salary while they go to school, with the understanding that they will be working for us for at least three years following that. Mr. Queen's been very helpful with ensuring that we get all that documentation together, and so they have signed a contract to work for us for three years. And the good thing about that as well is we're, we're building them within the culture of our sheriff's office, and we're more likely to retain them, because retention is, in my view, one of the biggest and most important things to saving us money, because it costs money to retrain folks, but to kind of bring them into the family of the sheriff's office. And hopefully, they, they come, they join, and they stay for an extended period.
I know a lot of other counties have done that for quite some time, so it's good to see we're doing that.
Yeah.
Good way to recruit and retain them as well. So I appreciate your work, taking care of that and getting that done, because that's something I feel likes a huge benefit.
And, and Mr. Moore, Mr. Morhead has been very helpful and guided me through that process, and making sure that we're, we're doing in accordance with training and standards, and of course, all the legal requirements. I'm very confident that going forward, within the next year or two, we're going to see staffing levels at the very top, hopefully be able to fill this if the budget is approved for our SROs, and continue that way forward, so.
Mr. Morhead? Sorry. Go ahead. As far as, I know we mentioned the towns and them helping out, are they talking like they'll help us out from a vehicle standpoint, or even a siree standpoint? I know we discussed some of that, so.
Nothing official. I did receive some proposals from Waynesville and Canton, and there, if we go that route to where the positions were funded as a, as a blend of sheriff's office and a couple of the towns, we could bring down that price a little bit on the equipment, but not, you know, to use an accounting term, I don't, I don't think it would be material as far as the savings. It would just be a, a way to probably staff quicker or more quickly.
No, from an administrative standpoint or a management standpoint, it's probably better to have it under one umbrella, as far as having it all under the sheriff's office, so anyway.
You talked about partnering with the, the police departments and stuff, the municipalities. Do they have any trained SOARs, or if they're not using it, we could use until we get these trained?
Commissioner, I'm not sure how to answer that. Right now, I can't, I can't speak for them. I can tell you that there is a, there's an effort amongst all of us, law enforcement leaders within the county, to train together, get as many trained as possible. I would also invite the chiefs of police to send as many as they can to the school that's being held at HCC in July, so that we have a pool of ready, available, and trained folks. And again, it's, it's very specialized, and it's going to be very specialized going forward. I know that doesn't necessarily answer your question, but our intent would certainly be to share in the training and have those folks available.
I see some of them, like at Canton Middle School, where they've got local police that, you know, as SROs, I just didn't know if they had two or three trained that you could work together with until we could get some more trained or something to get SROs in there quicker.
So training is ongoing, all the time. This is, you know, the training plan is not new, and our trainers have been working together. We've just kind of stepped that up. We're going to be doing things when the schools are closed for the summer. We're actually going to be going to the schools, and the budget contains some specialized things that will help us, some equipment that will help us train, something called simunitions is, is what we're looking at. And, and. simulations is what we're looking at. And without getting into all the details of that, that's the key to making sure that if we have to respond, training and speed are critical. And Nashville set the standard. And Nashville did everything that protocols require them to do, and I would sadly remind you, they still lost six individuals there. Time and training equals lives saved. Unfortunately, when we get to that point, lives will be lost. The question is, how many can we save by getting there quickly and having the training and the equipment necessary to prevent further damage? It's a terrible thing to think about. It's hard for me to stand here and talk about it, but that's what we have, that's what we're faced with, and that's what we have to do.
I was reading an article, and it was talking about a shooter went to that school because the other school...
Correct.
Yeah, that they had picked was harmed.
And I have to say that Dr. Putnam and I have been in open communication. There's some things that we have to do to make the school targets undesirable. And not only do we want to harden those targets, but we want to make sure and send the message very clearly that if you intend to come do harm to our children, we're going to take you out. Just, that's just, I mean, that's what we're going to do, and that's part of it. So, the training aspect of that, and the plan and the vision going forward, I'm confident that we're going to be in a lot better place within a year, and particularly if this is passed. And again, any questions, I'm available at any time, so. Good, thank you.
Stayed close, Bill. I'm going to have you read that.
I know, it's...
Okay, okay.
That's...
Okay, okay.
That's all I have, unless there are other questions.
I just want to make a comment, and I usually don't make these national comments, but you know, this health insurance is just, it's, when you look at the graphs, it's, I mean, in 2014, it was $6 million, and now it's $13 million. And I remember in 20, about that time, they passed Obamacare, and we were supposed to have lower health premium, and we were supposed to, everything was supposed to be cheaper. You know, healthcare costs were going to go down, and they didn't. If anything, they, it went more, so.
We had to took the path we did by swapping. You could see that graph. I mean, it was a shooting straight up almost, so. Took the steps we did, it'd be even higher.
And I know our wellness clinic keeps costs down because, you know, it's there, so.
We've got some big drivers to our health plan, and some of the things that are controllable, and that's what we're trying to work on, is, some of it's lifestyle, some of it, you know, for instance, we've got a large number of employees with diabetes, and insulin costs have risen the last few years like you wouldn't believe. That we've got heart disease and diabetes, it's, those things, but we actually are trying to implement, and later on, in June, we're actually going to do some biometric screenings, make it voluntary for our employees. We've got an incentive there to get folks, the blood draws, so they know their numbers, they meet with a counselor. If they go through that program, we're going to use the hospital for a meeting with a nutritionist. So there are some things that we're trying to do so we can keep our costs from rising as steeply. I don't think, we're never going to flatten it or see it decrease, but if we can just slow that growth, then, and we're up about 7.2%, and national average is over 10. So while it's a big budget consideration, I feel like we're performing fairly well, but I think we can get better.
Anybody got any other questions or comments?
Well, I'd like to thank you for the time and effort you put in on this, and just for everybody else's information that's looking, watching this on YouTube or in the audience. Bryant and Will and staff have been very good to call each one of us in individually. We've sat down and went over this line item by line item, to try to expedite this public presentation that the county manager has given us. So we were all scheduled and sat down in quite lengthy sessions going over this budget, and we'll continue to. And so, thank you, Bryant.
Well, thank you, and each of you invested two hours individually into this, to work together to get something that meets the needs of the community, but also is, keeps us fiscally sound, is a tough balance, or getting more tough, too.
I can remember from our auditor's presentation, the last presentation that we got, speaking of fund balance, I know Commissioner Rogers brought that up. We continue, even with the projections of the jail project and so on and so forth, we continue to be in the upper percentile across the state as far as our fund balance. And that's where we need to stay. That rainy day fund, it's there for rainy days, and with inflation, and with things going on on a national scale that we're seeing right now, it didn't go unnoticed that you said you had to make some appropriations for fuel for the sheriff's department. You know, it's just like everybody's household across America. Interest rates are going up, inflation's going up, the cost of employees, and I can tell you that the employee retention is huge across the state, and I think you've done a good job of trying to keep our public served and to keep our employees here. So, so the challenges that we're facing with the mill closure, and that ripple effect worries me. It worries me over the next 18 months. So we'll see where it goes, but, you know, I think, I think we're really going to have to look really close in the next fiscal year. You know, we're pretty good right now, but we'll just see and hope for the best.
Thank you, Bryant. And I do appreciate all the staff that's working on this, so.
I would like to invite everybody to take the opportunity to review the budget. I think you said it would be posted online in the morning. And I'm sure if there's any questions, all of us will do our best to find the answer. It is challenging, and to not make a political statement in any way. It is definitely challenging to be faced with making a decision on a tax increase, but I feel very strongly about how we protect the most innocent of our citizens, and it is not, it has now become the norm. It is, we turn on the news or get notifications on our phone, that it is almost daily occurrence. And from my seat, and likely from the gentlemen that I serve with, I think it would live with us forever if we did not make the right decision trying to fund that SRO program. So I think it's vital to, I really believe it's vital to our community. I really do. I'd rather have it and never use it than need it and not have it.
... issues, and Commissioner Enslie spoke about the targeted school in Nashville. It was a no-gun, gun-free zone. The active shooter drove right by two places, had signs up saying that these people are armed on this facility, and went to a gun-free zone. So I know the state of Ohio has been working toward enabling teachers and some administrative staff to have guns. I think we're ahead of the curve on that. I think Sheriff Wilkie can attest to that. And I appreciate his stand concerning our most vulnerable. You know, we need to let people know that we've got their back, and if you try to cause harm to our children, you're going to pay. And I appreciate the stand he's took on that. But as things change, you know, I think moving forward, we need to be, you know, we need to be quick on our feet. If legislative decisions are made where things change, and it's more economical to go another route, I don't think we should back off on safety, something that's more efficient, quicker, keeping our kids safer. I think we should certainly not turn a deaf ear or blind eye to any changing events at the state legislature or on the federal level. And I know there are a lot of proactive steps being taken in other states, so I'll just throw that out there.
I want to thank you for sitting down and explaining all that stuff to me. This has been my first one, and this big, anyway. But I appreciate you explaining everything to me, and that helps me to, when the people ask me something, then I give them a more solid answer, you know, when they're asking me something about this. And I agree with the rest of them here about the, nobody likes a tax increase, and I sure don't like a tax increase. And I, but if I think there's anything that we need it for, it would be for the kids. And I don't think there's too many people that would complain about a tax increase, knowing where it's going. And that's why I say, when you explain it to us, I believe that'll help a lot of people understand why, if we have to do that, we're going to have to do it, and that, you know, it'd be for a good cause instead of just something that, you know, we don't have to have like that. Because one incident, and it's too late. I mean, you don't get two chances at it, you know. But we appreciate it, and the whole staff that worked on it. We really appreciate it, because I know it wasn't an easy job.
Thank you, thank you.
Somebody else? Okay. Thanks, Bryant. Okay, we'll move on to discussion, adjustment of the agenda, but I do not have anything. Does anyone else have anything? Okay, we'll move on to the consent agenda. We have eight items on the consent agenda. I want to have Sheriff Bill Wilkie come up and read number four, because it needs to be said. And I also want to remind everybody that we will be having a fallen officer's memorial in this room on Thursday, May the 18th, at 5:30. And we'll be honoring those who have lost their life in law enforcement in the line of duty. Thank you, thank you, Bill.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Proclamation recognizing May 14th through May 20th, 2023 as National Police Week. Whereas, the Congress and the President of the United States have designated that there be a National Peace Officers Memorial Day. And whereas, the members of the Haywood County Sheriff's Office, Haywood County Police Departments, and Highway Patrol serve an essential role in safeguarding the rights and freedom of the citizens of Haywood County. And whereas, it is important to recognize the duties and responsibilities of law enforcement officers and agencies, and to express appreciation for the contributions made by law enforcement officers. Now, therefore, be it resolved that the Board of County Commissioners of Haywood County, North Carolina, does hereby call upon all citizens to observe May 14th through May 20th, 2023, as National Police Week in Haywood County, with a ceremony honoring our fallen officers on Thursday, May 18th, and publicly salutes the service of law enforcement officers in our community and in communities across the nation. Adopted this 15th day of May, 2023, signed, L. Kevin Enslie, Chairman, Haywood County Board of Commissioners. Thank you.
Thank you, thank you. And I appreciate you explaining the complicated SRO officer...
And I'll be available for more questions. And I understand that it's a program that's that we're building from the bottom up, and there may be some changes, and I'm happy to talk about those as they come about.
Okay, alright, thank you.
Kind of along the lines of National Police Week, you kind of have a celebrity on your staff here. Is that correct?
I have many celebrities. Which one much you referring to, Commissioner?
I believe we're, I believe she's in attendance. Could you kind of speak to what happened to Ms. Morgan at the state level recently?
Yeah, actually, okay. I'm not going to look at her and embarrass her, so.
Maybe, let's have her come up.
Okay, alright. Shanda, I did not plan this up around this.
And thank you for doing this, Tommy.
I'll take the credit for it, Shanda, if you're embarrassed. I'll take the blame.
I wish I, I wish I had the narrative. So she had actually one of her employees submit her for the North Carolina Association of Public Safety Communications Officials, which is the Association for 911 Personnel across the State, submit her for 911 Center Director of the Year. She was chosen across 100 counties in North Carolina for that award for the year, got to go to Wilmington, take her family for a few days down there, accept the award, get some additional training, and do some really cool things. But I will tell you, in the short time that I've been sheriff, I can't imagine there's anybody can run a 911 center like Shanda Morgan. And I don't say that lightly, because every time I'm in there, her people are working very hard, they have a great attitude, and they don't have anything but good things to say about Ms. Morgan and their job. And, you know, as a manager, one of the most challenging things that I have found is setting the work environment in the midst of a challenging vision and challenges. And she has led that agency through, or that center, through floods, through all kinds of things that have happened in Haywood County, and she's done it by actually picking up a headset, answering calls for service, and she just didn't show the way. She actually went the way and got down there with her employees. And so, very, very happy to have her. I can't imagine anybody could do anything different. Shanda, I know you probably want to say something?
Oh, yes.
This.
Thank you. I'm actually very honored and just thankful to everyone that's had a part of my journey. Thank you.
Congratulations, Shanda. I know your mom would be very proud. Okay, so, something else I was wanting to mention, but does anyone have any questions about any of the eight items on the consent agenda?
Just a comment about item number six. If you guys looked at the packet, there was a couple in Haywood County donated $500 to our senior center for gaming equipment and things to help our senior adults. And I don't know who you are, you wanted to remain anonymous, but I want to give you a shout out publicly here in the meeting that you contributed $500, and we've got to run it through this grant process. So whoever you are, thank you for making a positive difference in the county.
Commissioner Long, I actually serve on that board, and when I was first chosen to serve on that board, I was amazed at what that senior center does. I mean, they do a lot for our seniors in the county, and it's very much appreciated. I know I told them last week in the meeting we had, that they don't tell their story enough. You know, it's, they do a whole lot for our folks, and they need to be recognized for it. While I'm talking, I guess on item number eight, Bryant, I don't know if you could speak to that. I know that's an important line item as well for our bridges and road repairs. If you care to comment on that.
This was some work that the state budget office has already completed, and I think state emergency management actually was able to help in funding. My understanding is, they can't pass those funds from emergency management straight to the budget office, so they're sending those funds to us to, in turn, give them back to state budget office. So their funds stretch a little bit further to do more bridges and roadwork.
Yes, that's a little more than what I was asking. I guess the biggest thing, that's good, but, or not asking, but just wanted the folks to know that we're still doing some of that work. So I know that there's a lot of folks that can get qualified, or not qualified, but chosen to have their bridges repaired. That was a big need here in the state.
It's a big need, and the meeting that we had at Bethel, I guess, three weeks ago or so, we talked to several, and I've worked with Kristin at the state budget on trying to see if we can get funds in place to help.
Jake, Mr. Stanton and his assistants from Transylvania County all the way over here tonight, so we thank you for being in attendance.
Any other comments or questions on the consent agenda? If not, I'll entertain a motion. We approve the consent agenda as presented?
Make a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented.
Okay. Any other discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Anyone opposed? That's unanimous. We'll move on to the regular agenda. I did want to make a comment that I should have made in constituent concerns, and Tommy sent this to me. Thank you, Tommy. So on Sunday, May 21st, which is this Sunday, there'll be the Third Annual WNC Drug Awareness Event at 3 o'clock. It'll go from 3 to 5, and it'll be at the Open Air GM at Lake Geneska. So I would invite the public to attend in this event, so I do want to give that shout out. Michelle Rogers is part of that, and she's very much involved in trying to help families who have lost loved ones to addiction. Okay, I'll move on to the regular agenda. The first item is to request approval to purchase one KME Severside Mount service pumper truck in the amount of $853,000 by the Crabtree Iron Death Fire Department. We have the captain of Crabtree Iron Death Volunteer Fire Department, Chad Moody. Is he here? Okay, Chad. And Chad, I think you've got a lot of your members or board here, maybe. Okay.
See them all smiling back there.
So, we have requested the purchase of one KME fire truck. We started this process back in January, December timeframe, looking into this. It's a two-and-a-half to three-year lead time on getting a truck right now, much like the ambulances the county's dealing with. So we started the process... So we started the process ahead of time. The need for the truck, we've got one truck that will be 21, 22 years old when this truck arrives to be replacing. OSFM requires a first-out engine to be less than 20 years old. So this truck will serve that purpose, be a dual-purpose truck and hold all the rescue plus firefighting equipment to handle the majority of the calls that our guys need on a daily basis on one truck, so.
Anybody have any, have you had your public meetings?
We did, yeah, last Thursday.
So, last Thursday. And did you have anybody there about this? Okay, did? Anybody have any questions? Okay.
This truck lasted as long as the other one did?
We hope.
So your board of directors have all voted to approve this. And your finance officer, as far as your finances, I guess you'll get with Kristen, everything's good. And your board of directors, were they in favor of this move, this truck?
Yep.
I guess what I was wondering, so when did you order the truck?
So we've not ordered yet. We will, after this meeting, contracts will be signed.
Call them in the morning, right?
Do what?
Call them in the morning.
That's right.
So you're looking at two and a half to three?
Yep, yeah, they're saying two to two and a half years, but we're kind of planning three years. That way we don't get our hopes up.
Do you think your truck will be okay in the meantime that you have?
Yeah, I think it'll be okay.
Okay. Alright. Okay, I'll entertain a motion for item one if there's no other question.
I'll make that motion.
Second.
Okay. Okay. Any other discussion?
Sorry.
It's okay. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Okay, it's unanimous. I thank y'all for coming out. He's got one, two, three, four, five, six of you from the fire department here, so appreciate y'all coming out and hanging in there. Okay, item two of the regular agenda is to request to execute memorandum of agreement with the North Carolina Office of State Budget and Management for a flood warning notification project in the amount of $1 million, and to award a water level sensor gauge bid to Distinctive AFW's Design Incorporated in the amount of $197,965, and approve, approval for the county manager to execute related document, related contract documents. And Emergency Services Director Travis Donaldson's here today. Same, how are you, Travis?
Good, Chairman, and.
That was a mouthful.
Good afternoon, and good afternoon, Commissioners. What I've got for you this afternoon is approval of a MOA for the million dollars for the siren, flood siren, rain gauge, and river gauge project. Previously, we'd done this on a different grant. This money is being repurposed, and we're going into an actual different grant, different pot of money to execute the same project with, hence the new MOA. And then the bid award is for nine river gauges, river monitoring gauges, just like the ones that you see along the rivers, typically mounted on the bridges with a LiDAR system that shoots a laser beam down toward the river, bounces back, determines level and flow, and then two additional rain gauges in areas that we've determined would be beneficial to know what kind of water is falling in the headwaters. So during the flood, one of our biggest issues was not knowing what was happening out there with what was actually falling and what was going on in the rivers. So this project takes us many leaps and bounds forward in having early notification that something is going on that we need to warn our citizens of. Once this project's complete, it's going to be tied in to an upcoming project to be able to do the sirens for the early notification and warning for folks in flood-prone areas. So these are going to tie together nicely and hopefully serve us well and be able to warn our citizens if they need to get out of the way.
So Travis, how long, so once those sirens go off, how long do they have to, I guess, go to higher ground? Is that what that would be for?
Yeah, it's going to depend on the notification based on getting those out. And the siren project is going to be a different project that we're getting ready to step into. The project tonight is mainly the river gauges and the rain gauges placed in the headwater areas.
Travis, when you collect this data, this information, where does that go to? Does it go to you guys, or?
It actually goes to several outlets. There's state monitoring systems. They're tied in throughout the state through emergency management, as well as us having access to it. USGS, everybody for the most part, if you've got a gauge, somebody's sharing that information. So it gets shared with multiple entities.
I guess it takes everything into consideration, what the weather forecast is, if there's more rain coming.
Yep. One of the, a very key to the Crusoe area, river gauge is actually going to be there on the tunnel at Big East Fork Trail. So we actually know what it's doing up there on that side of the river. Our first gauge isn't until the Big East Fork Ranch. That's a lot of distance that we don't know what's going on.
Where that started was.
So if we know what it's doing at the tunnel, we'll have a whole lot more time to be able to warn folks and give notice to seek higher ground.
When do you think the project will be complete?
I just spoke to the vendor. He's saying five to six months, barring any issues. But he felt comfortable in saying five to six months from the time we issued the contract.
Do these operate on cell phone signal or on electric or telephone?
They're a combination between power, solar, and then cellphone, and then actually radio frequency. All the rain gauges themselves operate off of radio frequency on, I think, I believe, a UHF system or VHF system.
So they'll, they will, that cuts out. Would there be like battery packs there? Okay, good.
Yes, there will be redundant power systems and communication systems.
Because, yeah, if cell towers go out, then, yeah.
Might be jumping the gun a little bit, but as far as warning folks from a siren standpoint, will it be audible as well as a notification going out?
Yeah, these will be, the siren system itself will be audible sirens, no different, very similar than to what Clyde has. But obviously newer technology to be able to give people that audible signal to seek higher ground. Strategically placed based on the needs.
It's been said many times, if that flood event had occurred at 4:30 in the morning instead of 4:30 in the afternoon, it would have been, it would have been terrible, right? So these sirens and educating people on what the purpose are. I mean, I can say where this could possibly save 50 to 75 lives in an event in the middle of the night.
Very easily. And you mentioned there the educational, educational, educational piece. We've got funds factored into that, so that once we get this siren project out there, that we're able to educate the public on what their response is if these sirens go off in the middle of the night.
It's going to be much quicker. I mean, now, Travis knows, I mean, the sheriff as well, when we have these situations, not only do we have to drive out and look at it, but then we have to drive to folks' homes and tell them to seek higher shelter. And so, a lot of time lost there. So like Commissioner Long pointed out, if it's to happen overnight, it could have been a whole lot worse. So having it in some places huge. I know when I went to a meeting at campground up Crusoe with Senator Corbin, several of the folks asked about some kind of an alarm system, so I think it's great.
And they have one in Clyde, because I have some friends that live there, and when they heard the siren, they knew they had to leave.
Yeah, Clyde, Towne of Clyde has one that's based there at the fire department. It's a manually engaged siren, and I think we're going to make an attempt at trying to incorporate updating that siren there to be able to be remotely activated versus having to actually be there at the fire department to be able to turn it on.
Travis, how long will it take for this to be implemented? Do you think?
The rain and river gauges, five to six months. The siren system, obviously, we've still got to go to bid and go through all the contracting processes. I think that realistically, the siren project itself is probably, hopefully, maybe looking at completion sometime toward middle to end of next year.
Okay. Well, it seems like hurricane season's worse in the mountains than it is in the oceans anymore, so I just, you know, so. I wish you, I was hoping you was going to say by September.
We can always hope that sooner the better, but I think realistically, I think we're looking at probably a year out on getting that fully operational.
And these funds are compliments of the State Budget Management Office, so thank you. I'm old enough to remember. I know there are several people in, maybe, well, not several. There might just be a few people who can remember when there was some fatalities in a flood, similar flood event. It wasn't as bad as Drop Storm Fred, but back in the 70s.
Yeah, I do.
You remember that, the young girl? There was a tremendous flood hit, just a microburst. I'd say that if those alarms had been in place in that day, that would have saved those lives as well.
Yep, and our folks in North Carolina Emergency Management and the folks that keep up with some of the rain gauges that we've got here in the county, we've been making really good strides in getting a lot of those that had needed some work for a long time and getting those back to where they need to be. Again, if we know what it's doing on the mountain tops, we have a really good idea of what it's going to do in the valleys afterwards. So being able to get that rainfall data on the headwater areas is very, very key in all this.
Any other questions? Can we have a motion to approve item two of the regular agenda?
Make a motion to approve item two.
Give her a second. Any more discussion? All those in favor say aye. Aye. Anyone opposed? Okay, it's unanimous. Thank you, Travis.
Thank you.
Okay, the next item, three, is to request approval to accept the bid in the amount of $24,900 for electric cleanup, electrical cleanup, electrical demolition of all unused equipment, installation of new distribution panels and connections for a new uninterrupted power supply by Latham Electric Incorporated, and approval for the county manager to execute all documents related to the backup 911 renovation project. And our Haywood County Facilities Director, Tim Sisk, is here to talk about that.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Good evening, Commissioners.
I've asked Joey and Shanda to kind of be with me here this evening.
We met some time back and started talking about renovating the backup 911 center. When we started talking about this, it was very clear to me, and Joey can speak to this, at least I hope he will, that the electrical equipment that's in this space is, it needs cleaning up in a big way. We've got unused UPS equipment. We've got unused junction boxes, large service junction boxes. We've got unused disconnects, distribution panels that simply need to be removed. In order to get to new connections for UPS, we need a new distribution panel. We need a new panel for branch circuits to be cleaned up, and that's what this whole project is about. Outside of that, that's what this, that's what this project is. It's the, kind of the stepping stone to get started on the backup 911. I'll certainly entertain any questions about the cleanup process of this project, and we can entertain any questions about the backup 911 center with Mrs. Morgan.
I've talked with Tim about this in depth, and it certainly is a needed, a needed thing to get prepped up and getting ready for that.
It's the only concern, is during this cleanup, as far as interruption, I guess we'll work through that as we.
There will be an interruption, there's no question. It is our plan to mitigate some of that through some temporary electrical work that we can do in-house. I think we've got a couple of recreational staff and some officers downstairs that will be interrupted, you know, during that time. But we've talked to all parties involved, minimal at best, but yeah.
We'll also have an interruption, because we'll be replacing a lot of the equipment there. So Shanda's worked with another county, and we've got a good contingency plan in place, so we still have a backup while that equipment's being replaced and the work's being done.
That was my next question, if we could talk to any other county.
Joey kind of.
I figured, I figured knowing Joey, he's probably going to talk.
Seamless transfer, that's what we're looking for.
Yes, and when you're talking, when you're talking almost a million dollars worth of emergency equipment, power is the one thing that can absolutely, as Tommy knows, it can cause electronics if that power's not clean. Your electronics are not going to last. So when we are investing that much of, that much money from the 911 fund into that equipment, we want to make sure that power's as clean as it can be. And basically, you've got a building that's been used for decades for lots of different purposes. And as different people have been in and out, it's just kind of been added to and added to to meet the needs. So this will get us back to a good standard of where we should be.
You want to say anything, Chen? No?
Unless you have any questions.
Oh, okay.
No, I think we have a good plan, and I think we will have no interruption at all, so we should be good.
Okay, so. I'll entertain a motion. Will you approve item three of the regular agenda?
So moved.
Give her a second.
Thank you.
Any other, any discussion? Anybody think of anything? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Okay, it's unanimous. And then number four is to request approval of additional repairs to Dakin HVAC system at our Paragon Parkway facilities. Go ahead, Tim.
Okay, this one is a continuation of the contract that this board approved on 2/6/23 with Bolton Construction. This was the repair component. The original assessment, if you will, was performed on 4/10/22 by Hoffman Mechanical. And Hoffman will be the contractor that we will be engaging in this approval. Once they got on site and started making some repairs, they simply found additional components. And we were able to move a few things around to fund this in this year's budget. So I don't want to, I don't want to, I don't want to lose my grip on Hoffman while I have them and get these additional components fixed, quite frankly.
Yeah.
And this list is, I mean, this list is extensive as well. If you've read it, it's compressors and condenser fan motors and pulling the system down and waiting overnight, and I don't have to tell Tommy what that consists of, just in labor. And the Dakin system is extremely specific to Hoffman Mechanical. That's the only company that's really ready to look after this equipment.
Okay. Any other questions on that? Even the name sounds foreign. Dakin, D-A-K-I.
Yeah, Dakin, I think, is how it's pronounced, Mr. Chairman.
What is that, Korean or something? Okay, that's what we got, okay. Okay, I'll entertain a motion. Will you approve item four?
Mr. Chairman, one second. In this, the language for, I want to also make sure that we add the approval for the county manager to engage the, or to execute the documents. It was in my presentation to you, but not in this.
Okay.
$25,000.
Twenty-five, give me one second. $25,957.64, Tom.
Okay, do we, is that okay, Amy? Okay. All right, so the motion will include what's written in item four, along with approval for county manager to execute all documents?
Yes, sir.
Okay. In the amount of $25,000.
In the amount of $25,957.64 to Hoffman Mechanical Solutions.
Okay, all right, that's the, that's the motion. Does, will anybody make that motion?
I make a motion to approve item four as amended.
Okay. Okay. Is that good, Amy? Okay, okay. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Okay, that's approved. Okay, thank you, Tim. Appreciate it. Okay, item six is the request approval of consolidated fee schedule, we have our management analyst, Will Scarborough. Oh, I do, did I miss one? Oh, I'm sorry, I'm sorry. Okay.
Hold your horses, Will, hold your horses.
Will wasn't, he wasn't, I looked at him and he wasn't coming up because he knew I was wrong. First time it's happened all day. Okay, item five is the request approval to award bid to Jackie Jones Chrysler Dodge Jeep Ram as the lowest responsible, responsible responsive bidder for the purchase of ten 2023 Dodge Chargers police package in the amount of three hundred and eighty-seven thousand dollars, and to authorize the county manager to execute all necessary documents. Chris, so.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners. I'm sure each of you are saying, here we go again, Chris is chasing his tail on vehicles. It does feel that way, it feels like we've chased a lot.
But these are there, right?
Just a little background information that Stellantis, who owns Dodge, is discontinuing the Charger after model year 2023. So next year, the only thing we have to purchase in pursuit rated is a midsize or full-size SUV, either an Explorer, a Tahoe, or a Durango. We got some information that there was some 2023 Chargers sitting on a lot, so we posted a bid quickly. We had one bid from Jackie Jones, they bid thirty-seven thousand, three hundred seventy-eight dollars for a pursuit-rated Charger that would meet our needs. They have ten of those on the lot, ready for delivery this week if this is approved tonight. So as much as we seem to have been chasing police cars, regular vehicles, ambulances, you know, this time we finally maybe have found something that is going to be significant benefit to us. So the difference that I want to share with you in purchasing these, current year, a pursuit-rated Durango is about nine thousand dollars more than his bid on these Chargers. We've seen an escalation of three to four thousand dollars in price per vehicle with the new model years coming. So it's easy to save by purchasing these now, instead of waiting next year to purchase some type of SUV, we can save about ten thousand dollars per unit, which saves us about a hundred thousand dollars. Don't want to speak necessarily for the sheriff, but that is just about enough funds to outfit all ten Chargers with light sirens radios. We were running about twelve, five, or thirteen, I think, in current year, so that, that just about gives us all of our outfit for free. By acting early on a tip we got that there were some Chargers sitting around in the far west of the state.
I happened to have business with the county manager that day when that occurred, he had a day off, and this came up where he needed to put the bid in, and he, he delayed his, he delayed his plans for his day off to come help save the county taxpayer, and I had a hundred thousand dollars, and I appreciate that. He rushed over here, done the paperwork, so that speaks well, and I'm glad we got that deal.
So I'm asking you to award the bid to Jackie Jones as the only bidder, because in our bid document, we had a request that these vehicles could be delivered to us within thirty days. We had contact from other folks that said, well, we may have some coming, we have maybe one or two on the lot, but this was the only group that could meet the guidelines of delivering all ten within thirty days.
So we're, we're good with the finance?
Hey. I entertain a motion, we approve item five of the regular agenda.
I move.
Okay, is there a second?
Second.
Any other discussion? Okay, all those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed?
Thank you.
Thanks, Chris, appreciate everybody's being proactive on that. Okay, item six is the request approval of consolidate, of a consolidated fee schedule, and now it's your turn, Will. So we have our management analyst, Will Scarborough, to present that.
Good evening, Commissioners, I'm here to discuss the fee schedule consolidation again and request the approval of that fee schedule. So as we talked about last time, the real problem we were running into with the different fees is that they were all decentralized within the different departments. And that definitely caused some problems. One example is some of the departments would charge credit card fees, some would not. Usually, when people were looking for fees, they had to reach out to the department specifically because there was no central hub where all of them were contained. And when making the budget, it's hard to budget correctly the fees if they change mid-year, and usually when people would bring fee changes to you, it was whenever they redid their fees, not necessarily at one central time period. So what we think will solve this problem is consolidating the fee schedule into one fee schedule that's centrally located, and there are some benefits that come with that. Those are, one, that is convenient because it's widely available, and what we plan to do is get a page on the website that contains all the fees without having to have it separately contained to all the different departments. So when you go on the website, you can just find all of these in one place. It's efficient because ideally what we'll do is during the budget process each year, we'll come before you all, usually before the rec, well, it will be before the recommended budget, bring any fee changes, and then once a year, you'll be able to change them unless there's some outstanding circumstance that we can't control. And then also, it's accurate, and that really has a lot to do with the budget, and make sure that before we recommend a budget to you, we know what the fees will be to be able to make accurate projections. So in the fee schedule that you all have, basically, there are four different types of, I guess, changes that you'll see. The first is an update, and basically all that is, is it showing if the fee changed either up or down or stayed the same. The second one is basically we're incorporating new fees, and that's usually denoted by the new notation under the change. We've got a consolidation, and basically what happens there is we had multiple fees that we consolidated into one fee to make it easier for both the departments and citizens to be able to understand what those fees are. And then we also eliminated fees that were no longer necessary or basically were covered by other fees, so those were no longer necessary. So departments fell under three different categories, one, where changes were requested, two, where changes were not requested, and then special cases. With the changes requested, basically, we created a quote-unquote department, but really, it's the whole county will have certain fees that apply to everyone unless there's like a statute or something that says that it doesn't. But the highlight of that is the three percent credit card fee, and I know last time we talked about signage if this were to be approved, and our plan is to be able to make not just like a piece of paper we stick up, but an actual nice sign to be able to make sure people know that that is a fee that we're going to have if this is approved.
I think most people expect that.
Yeah.
If you use a card.
Yeah. So the next one is development services, and this is where most of the changes occurred. And basically, what was going on was they surveyed a lot of the surrounding counties to find out what their fees were, and in a, like inspections specifically, those had not been updated since 2008. So we wanted to make sure that those fees were accurately aligned to what other counties were charging so that we weren't selling ourselves short. For GIS land records, basically, that was a massive consolidation. It went from fifty-seven fees down to eleven, and a lot of that has to do with different mapping types, and Joey did, worked really hard to make sure that it was pretty straightforward and simple within the fee schedule so that people would understand what they actually needed. The second grouping of departments is animal services, library, DSS, under no changes requested. Animal services, they updated theirs in 2020, and since this was first presented, we actually do have a couple of changes, but we'll talk about that on the next slide. The library is in alignment with its neighbors and its fees, but on the last fee schedule you all saw, there are a few omitted, so we'll talk about that. But overall, those fees are not actually changing, they just needed to be added to the fee schedule. And then DSS, none of their fees changed, but just a note, clinic fees for specifically the health department, we kept those separately because those are really governed by the state, so we don't have any say on them, and they should probably be kept separate. And then the last category is special cases. The first one is EMS, and basically, their rates, we already have basically a contract approved where every year it rolls where their fees are based on the Center for Medicare and Medicaid Services billing rate, and basically what they do is they capture all available insurance money via those fees. So that we already do, and we'll continue doing it, so that's a special case. The next one is register of deeds, and that one is governed by general statute, so although it's on the fee schedule technically, we don't, we don't have anything to do with it. Next, we have the sheriff's office, and the only change they had was the pistol permit fee, and that was eliminated by the state, so we just no longer charge for that. And then solid waste, we have in the budget ordinance that you all received earlier, and those have to be located in there.
pistol permit fee was what, five dollars?
Yeah, it was five dollars. So update since the last time I was in front of you, the first one was the library late fees, and those were just accidentally omitted, so we added those to make sure that they were on there. Animal services got rid of three different fees, one was heartworm tests, the next was feline immunodeficiency virus slash feline leukemia virus, and then the last one was a cat trap deposit. And then register of deeds, we had a few changes, and really, it was just clarifying some language and making sure that we delineated what fees went where. So some fees, some of the money goes to the register of deeds, and some goes to the vital records. So really, what that was, is just making sure those were delineated correctly. And then planning, we clarified the manufactured home definition, and basically, RVs were a part of that original denotation, and they do not fall under the manufactured homes, so we took just that two words out. And then inspections, there are a couple of things in that that really we discovered through the ordinance project that Amy's finishing up, and one of them was the adult establishment business license. No one's ever applied for one here, but we technically have a fee in the ordinance, so we wanted to make sure that we added that to inspections to cover that fee. And then we also have fire prevention fees, and we wanted to basically move the fees from that into the fee schedule so that when you change the fees, if necessary, in the future, it won't be located in the ordinance where you have to change the whole ordinance. It will just be in the fee schedule, and then the ordinance will reference the fee schedule. So that's why we did that, and those were added. So I can take any questions, but just a note, if approved, this will go into effect on July 1st, 2023, with the new fiscal year.
All those EMS changes with Medicaid expansion and everything, that's a, that's a set fee that's reimbursed to the person needing care, so it's, it's, that's just keeping up with what the set standard fee is. I noticed a lot of changes in that section, so.
Yeah.
Yeah. Just Medicaid reimbursement, that's all it is.
That's who we bill Medicaid?
Ask about the fee on this public information request thing, on the statute on that public information, Joey will know about it. That, it says in the statute, if I'm understanding correct, if somebody don't ask you for something specific, then we can charge them for it if they get really exorbitant, and it takes a lot of manpower and a lot of hours to do it.
There is a provision in General Statute 132, six dot two, that does say if a request requires extensive use of information technology resources or extensive use of clerical or supervisory resources, that the county can charge for those resources, up to and including labor, where normally we are only allowed to charge for the materials that are used and not the labor. The law does not define what the extensive use would be. So we would, we would need a policy in Haywood County that would define that in order for us to charge that, so we could do that uniformly across the board. If that's something you guys were interested in, we could put something together and bring it back to you.
That be up to a certain amount, Joey, how would that work? Where would be the dividing line on that?
That would be, that would be up to a policy that's not being created currently. We would have to draw a line in the sand, basically, that said at this point, when we consume this amount of staff time or this amount of resources, we would begin to charge. The statute does allow to charge for labor if that's staff resources, or for any cost we incur from a technology standpoint, if that's technology resources.
Somebody, say somebody asks for something that they're, they're just on a witch hunt, can't tell you what they're hunting for, and just want exorbitant amount of information and stuff like that, would that fall in that category?
It would depend on the amount of resources that were used, we get a tremendous amount of public record requests, some of those are very specific, and those we can handle very quickly and very efficiently. If, if somebody comes up and says, I'm looking for this particular contract, for example, that can be turned around in minutes, not a big deal. Those things we deal with on a daily basis. We do get an increasing number of more broad requests where we may have, and I've used this example recently, we had a request where somebody had requested, I think, fifteen months' worth of emails from three different staff members, which would require someone to go through and, and review about, I think it was sixty thousand emails or something to that effect. This particular person was very easy to work with, we let them know, you know, we'll be glad to do whatever we need to do, but this is going to take months to complete this, and we gave them some, some options, we can refine this by keywords, we can refine this by timeline to bring that down to a, to a, a level that would be quicker, and they were able to do that into a much smaller scope. But we do have some requests that are, that we receive from lots of different places that are more open-ended, and with those, it does consume a considerable amount of staff time, so depending on where that line would be, those would fall into a billable category.
A pretty exorbitant amount of money, what, what would you estimate on what that one you're talking about would cost, the one that said fifteen months or what it was?
Well, I don't really know, I can tell you, we had one during the pandemic with the health director, and it took trying to balance going through those, because when you're dealing with the health director's email, a lot of the information that she receives is protected by HIPAA and different privacy statutes. I know that that one in particular took six months for her to sort through all those emails and balance sorting through all those emails with her regular duties in the middle of a pandemic. So it was the perfect storm, it took six months. I don't know exactly how many man-hours that was, but it was considerable. And that, that's probably the largest one we've actually produced in recent history, but we've had several requests that are, that are large and consume a lot of staff time.
All of the statute can do, you know, because we get several, I know one of them, I believe you told me it took forty hours and eight people, wasn't it?
Yeah.
That's a whole lot of money, that the county's people and the taxpayers' money are paying for nothing, when, when there wasn't nothing there, and then there's, we're paying that kind of money for nothing.
We've done that for about fifteen years with one person here, so. Yeah. Yeah, there, there usually isn't anything, so. Go ahead, Brian.
Mr. Chairman, if, if that's something you'd like us to look into, we can, we can spend the next thirty, sixty days looking at it, that law isn't real specific, so we want to make sure that if we go down that road, that we get it right.
You're probably going to have to charge any, any public request that, because if you don't, it might be easy, but easy. Employees, we, we just approved a budget, an hourly rate, so if it takes an employee an hour, that's fifteen dollars. But the guy, but if Joey's doing it, it's probably, you know, a lot more than that, so.
The statute is really drafted in a, Joey points it out, he actually read the part of it, the statute is very vague, and it, it anticipates. The statute is very vague and it, it, it anticipates that the, the examples that Joey mentioned of just popping up a, a copy of a contract or, or a dozen contracts or something is, is very easy to do and very, um, cut and dried. The statute seems to anticipate that all of those, uh, public records responses will be at just the cost of reproduction, just the cost of copies. Okay? It's, it, but the statute also says that if it takes this extraordinary, uh, uh, amount of time of folks, not just, and, and other resources, then you can, you can set it up. But without a policy, we need to establish a policy so that we can apply that, uh, correctly and, and, and uniformly, again, uniformly, so that there's no allegation that it's, uh, that somebody's being punished or something. It also gives you a, a, a negotiation, uh, issue with the, with the requestor because sometimes the requestors don't realize how complex the, 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 um, information, how the information is embedded in things that have to be sorted out. That's what Joe was talking about, that, that we also have some software coming, I think. Is that right, Joey? That, yeah, we've got some software coming that, uh, will handle some of that kind of, uh, processing large quantities of, uh, emails, documents and things like that to pluck out the information you need, uh, by date, subject matter, that kind of thing. That, that's going to simplify in many cases, these routine requests that come from a lot of different sources for a lot of aggregated information rather than just a copy of a thing. So the, we, we, there, there'd be a lot of moving parts on this particular policy, the business of, of, um, responses to public records requests, it, that's going to impact how we do our business. We also are not far away probably from a, um, a public information officer being hired and that, and you shuffle some of those duties into, into that office if, um, if that gets done.
Somebody requests for you, for example, to, to go over after Joey's went out and then the county manager to go through it and you go through it, would, would that statute cover y'all's fees?
Well, they need to, they need to, they need to seriously consider what my fees might be in that situation. And, um, we don't, we don't actually have a schedule for my fees for that kind of situation, but we could look into it. And I think that something ought to be looked into, absolutely.
And I will say Frank mentioned, um, about, a little bit about that, but the, uh, about being able to negotiate the scope of the public records request. The really unfortunate part in the example that I mentioned with the health director is she put six hours or six months worth of labor into producing that request. And when she reached back out to the media outlet that had made the request initially, they, uh, to see how they want it delivered, they said, oh, uh, we don't need that anymore. So that entire amount of labor really was just wasted, um, where if we had been able to let them know how long it would have taken and provided some kind of estimate, maybe that would have allowed us to negotiate some there.
Getting back to the, the big picture, the fee structure is basically just keeping up with times. It had, some of them hadn't been updated in 15 years, is that correct? Since 2008?
Yeah. The inspections, uh, were not updated since 2008 and then, let me make sure, but environmental health was 2002 and then, Garen, you might know, Garen might know more. Um, I don't have how long planning was, but inspections alone.
Reasonable and customary is what we're looking for. Milk and bread's gone up in 15 years.
And one thing that's interesting on the land records piece, um, like Will said, we dropped it from 57 different charges to 11. You'll actually see a reduction in a lot of those fees or they've stayed the same. Um, part of that is because as technology has improved, the cost of the materials has reduced. So where in the past it was, it, it, the cost of printing a three by four foot map might be 40 or 50 dollars. Now that cost has reduced greatly as we've gotten better technology. So that's another, another benefit of reevaluating the fee schedules is being able to line those up with the cost.
I saw several of them had went down. Yeah.
Might be a good idea to get on some kind of a schedule if it's over four years, just like a reevaluation where we look at this every three or four years. So, uh, maybe something I need to check in.
Questions are coming. Yeah, we got to prove it.
Yeah.
Item six, yeah.
Get your hard work on that. That's going to help, it's going to help us and help other people too. It's good.
Okay. So why don't we, um, why don't we approve item six and then, um, we'll talk about Terry's point there. So, uh, I entertain a motion, we approve item six. Any other discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Okay. Then the Terry's point about the, uh, so we're going to hire a public information officer, officer, a PIO. And, um, we're looking at doing that soon, but they're paid a salary, I guess. And this, this program that y'all are going to buy, how much is it?
It's about 6,000 annually.
Annually? So to me.
Excuse me, go ahead.
Uh, just to me, if, okay, that's $6,000 annual, that's a cost. So we need to probably have a cost built in, even though it might be easy for peop, for the, for that to, uh, for that also. I'm just talking, you know, because.
Are we using that as justification to hire a PIO?
No, no.
No, you're just saying that we possibly need to go that direction.
Correct. Um, I, I would like to have a few weeks to reach out to the school of government and research this and see if there's other counties or municipalities that have gone down this road. Uh, because it, it.
It's like if we're, if, if they just keep getting worse and worse and worse.
Oh, it is.
And the people's out here, tax money is going for foolishness games and, and on some, some of them are legit. There's a lot of them that are legit, but there's some of it won't ask for nothing specific. They, and they're just, they're just hunting something. I mean, it admitted they just hunt something. And when you've got two or three citizens out here just hunting something like that, they're taking up tons of the county's time. Yeah. Plus the taxpayers' money.
I agree. Very few of them are legit, believe me. So I agree with you.
They be doing other jobs out here that, that would help the county instead of wasting time on stuff like this, I think. That's just my opinion on it.
No, you're right. You're right. Okay. So why don't you check into that, Brian, with the school of government and find out what they say and kind of get back to us all.
I'll, I'll try to have something to report back, uh, June 5th.
Okay. Okay. Great. Okay. Okay. All right. So that concludes the regular agenda, right? Amy, are we doing good? Okay. All right. Next is appointments, uh, request approval, appointment of one position by vote to the Haywood County Community Board, College Board of Trustees. We interviewed, uh, so we, there's two candidates, very good candidates, Danny Wingate and Ed Brown had submitted applications and we had great candidates for this one position, unfortunately.
Haywood Community College Board of Trustees.
That concludes the, uh, agenda. We do not have a closed session. Does anyone have any other business to bring before the board?
Well, I do, Mr. Chairman. Uh, I'd like to wish all the mothers, I think you kind of stole some of that with, uh, bragging on your mother. My mother's in the rest home care facility. She raised five children, her and my father. Uh, we actually had a milk cow. We had fresh milk and butter growing up through high school and she actually sewed our clothes so we could afford store bought clothes about the seventh grade, if I remember correctly. I was looking at her hands, I went down and fed her breakfast yesterday morning and I was looking at her hands and I thought, boy, if those hands could talk, all the work she did and to help other people. Grew a big garden, had enough for us and then gave enough away to needy families that needed it. I feel fortunate to have a mother like I did and I just want to wish all the mothers out there around the county and, uh, Happy Mother's Day, belated one day, so.
Okay. Anybody else got anything they want to say? I do want to say that the, uh, friends over in the NRA, Blue Ridge friends over in the NRA will be having their banquet on May 25th at the fairgrounds. That's on a Thursday night and, uh, the money goes to the shooting clubs at this high school teaches young people how to handle firearms. So if anybody's interested in that, uh, that'll be, uh, they can call me or Brandon if they're interested in that, we can get you in touch with somebody. Um, I will say Bethel Middle School won the state championship and I can't remember what Brandon Sutton told me that Pisgah and Tuscola did, but I think they tied in their competition. So, but there were several competitions, so. Yeah, they did. They did very well.
Excellent program.
Yeah. Yeah, it is. So, and this, this helps keep, uh, young people, uh, this is, you know, not everybody's going to play ball, not everybody's going to do certain things, but some people are, are more interested, uh, like I was when I was a young person in hunting and stuff. So, but, uh, and I do want to say again that I appreciate that I had a godly mother and she taught me, uh, taught me well and I was, I've been very blessed with my parents, so. Okay. Okay. Does anybody have anything else? I'll entertain a motion, will you, I see, I think I got everything. Is that everything, Amy? Okay. Uh, I'll entertain a motion, will you adjourn?
Second.
Okay. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Okay. We adjourn and everybody have a good evening.